Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the October 11th, 2023 meeting of the Murphy's Borough Planning Commission. We will call the meeting to order. We do have a quorum present tonight. We did not have anybody register for public comments. So our first item of business is to approve the minutes of the September 20th, 2023 Planning Commission meeting. So we had a chance to read those ahead of time. Anybody have any changes, additions, corrections?
Blue for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Ms. Jacob.
Ms. Avery Water?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton's not here. Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Silas?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye. Okay. Then we do have one item of old business tonight. This is a zoning application for approximately 1.2 acres located along North Manny Avenue and Lee Street to be rezoned from OGR and CCO to PRD and CCO. It's Manny Estates, PRD. BNA Homes is the applicant. Ms. Smith, good evening.
Good evening, Chair Jones and Commission. You may recall, the picture on your screen shows the existing location for this OGR-zoned property that is fronted by both Manny Streets and Lee Streets. And it does have an existing home on the property in this location and this location that are proposed to be removed with the project site. This particular site, we looked at back in July. We had an initial public hearing. And during that public hearing, we discussed that the project is in the North Highlands subject area shown in the yellow dash line. And it's two different zone types for the future land use, one being single-family residential and one being mixed residential neighborhood in that plan. So this PRD tries to incorporate those single-family detached homes on individual lots of record along Manny and townhomes along the Lee Street side. In looking at the, since you last saw it, we did have a neighborhood meeting that occurred about August 14th, where we had about 20 neighbors that went ahead and showed up to the meeting. During that meeting and their discussion, they really brought up two key points that they were concerned about and wanted the developer to look into. And they will be further addressing it later this evening. One was whether or not four single-family detached units needed to be along Manny Street. And then the other was, they do have a lot of trees within the property site, and they wanted to see if they could preserve any of those trees. So when we did receive the updated PRD book, as you can see in this description, they did update it to a site plan that actually had very specific dimensions for their plat map that you considered about the same time. And the density slightly changed to 11.97 units to the acre on the townhome side, whereas the OGR currently allows between 14.5 and 17.4 units to the acre. And the single-family side slightly changed to 6.67 units to the acre, which is less than the comparative RS4. But the OGR dense that they have in place today allows for 8.7 units to the acre. So with that, and the updates, we actually saw two less exceptions being requested. The comparative district for the townhomes, previously, I think they were at 12.01, which required an exception to that comparative district. Now that they are slightly under, they no longer need that particular exception. And then the other one that we looked at was the setbacks in the areas. And I think we slightly discussed the rear detached garages for single-family. Under our current development codes, can be allowed within a five-foot rear yard setback, so it was not a setback from their normal rear yard. So in looking at that, last but not least, they did modify ever so slightly the townhome view from Lee Street. You may recall, it had a couple of different colors and palettes in it, and staff had requested that at least they unify the color palette. And here we are. So this is the portion of the townhome that they modified before it had multiple other colors. But by having that singular color, we thought that it blended better with the neighborhood because it didn't feel like three separate townhome units with that modification. So we thought it was also appropriate to remove that exception from their PRD book. And that's all staff has to share with you this evening. I believe Clyde Roundtree has a presentation that he'd like to provide and updates for it. And again, this is the area that we are looking at that's highlighted in blue on the screen.
Thank you, Holly. Clyde Roundtree with Huddleston Steel Engineering. I'm also here with Manley Twee from Huddleston Steel Engineering, if you have any engineering questions in particular. And Drew and Sonya from Brian's office are also here for any insight questions from the owner's perspective. But with that in mind, Holly's been working real hard with us to kind of get this plan development to the exact location we feel like it needed to be. And as was mentioned, we did have a neighborhood meeting. You all seen the plan. We've walked through the plan before, but I'll go ahead and at least get to the overall site plan so we can walk through that in a little bit more detail. Let's see where we're at. I'm sorry, Holly, there is, sorry. Yeah, she's wrong. Okay, so on page 13 of the pattern book, it goes in through the home types Holly had mentioned. So what we want to talk about, and what came up at a neighborhood meeting, and what's been the big question, is there's four single-family homes along North Manny Avenue. And the neighbors asked that can go down to three? Is that possible? And part of their concern was, yes, you know, is it tighter? It's tighter than they wanted it to be. Brian came back and said, this is somewhat typical of what he did on North Maple. So there's a product type that's very similar that's been very successful. And he's running so much margin as far as, you know, the quality of the homes along North Manny are beautiful. Brian's worked on a few of those and preserved them himself. You know, one of the houses adjacent, literally across the street, was a home that he restored. So he understands the character of the homes and the quality of homes that need to be there. To maintain the character and quality, he has to put the four there to allow to be the product that he thinks would be most successful as far as the character of the neighborhood and the quality of the neighborhood. So that's really the justification. The neighbors were also concerned that there are some existing trees. There's a lot of mature existing trees on the property. And they're asking if at all possible, is there any way we can preserve those trees? And we went out this morning and basically walked through our survey and documented where the trees are, where the townhomes are on the Lee Street side. There are quite a few trees along the property line that's between us and the church that's adjacent property to the north. Those trees, we feel like, can be preserved. That's a big deal because they really almost give a solid wall of green between this property and the church. There's also some trees that are on the back portion of the townhomes that we feel like can be preserved. And there's one tree on one of the single-family lots that's right on the cusp, supposed to be on the edge of the parking lot, that we might be able to massage a little bit. So I spoke to Matthew and Holly about that, and we're going to do our best before City Council, if this moves forward, to verify what it would take to make sure those trees can stay in good shape in the construction process, and talked to Mr. Burns about that. Brian is more than willing to commit to saving the trees that are able to be saved. It's always challenging to commit to preserving them, and the fact that sometimes grading gets in the way, and sometimes compaction gets in the way. But there is definitely, you know, strong interest on the neighbor's part to make sure those trees are kept intact, if at all possible. And again, I spoke to Brian about that. He's committed to it. We'll try to find some language in the pattern book that says, we're going to try to do our best to preserve those. And with that in mind, it's something you've seen before. The neighborhood meeting was, it was well-attended, as Holly mentioned, 20 people showed up, a lot of dialogue. Right after the neighborhood meeting, everyone went outside the church where it was held and kind of looked at the trees and kind of walked the grounds. And so with that in mind, I'm here for any questions. If you have any engineering questions, Manley can be available for that. But thank you for considering our request, in this manner.
Can I ask on the Manny Avenue side, the single-family number C? So is there a garage, or is that a covered carport on the back? Or is that attached garage for that unit?
Chairman Jones, on that one, on C, on that particular unit, that is a rear-entry garage. The rest are detached. That house has a little more depth. If you can see, it's 74 feet deep, so it's a little bit of a larger home, one of the largest homes on of the four that are offered.
And all one-car garages on the townhome side? And there's enough space back there for all of the backing in and out of the garages?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, there's one parking in garage and two outside of the garage for each unit. And then two guest spaces as well, towards the south side of the parking lot.
In the plan book, can you remind me, what page? Oh, I found it, page 17. Is the revised, is that the only revision to any of the exterior?
Yes, the ordinance reads that in the North Highlands study, they want the townhomes that present to the road to look more like a single-family home. And as Holly mentioned, we had quite a bit of, these are the ones in the right corner actually built. Those are on Lee Street now that Brian built a few years back. And they have lots of different materials and kind of highlight materials and color. We changed the color palette to make it more uniform, to make it look more like a single-family home. It's a three-unit. That concept probably works better when there's two units that are being combined to look like one. When you have three, it becomes a really large-looking, single-family house. So we felt like by sedating the color and blending them, at least it looks unified. And that was really the goal.
And that was something that they did in working with staff. We thought that with three units, the massing just kind of made it difficult to look like a single-family home. It would look just like a gigantic, single-family home. So we thought that having more of a unified color palette for that front building would go a long way towards that, instead of trying to make them make physical modifications to the building to make it look like one giant home.
And is that three-story, three-unit? Is that all brick, or is that all hardy? Or what is that?
Chairman Jones, they're all masonry, so it's a combination of hardy and stone and brick. Actually, I think it's brick and stone, brick and hardy at this point. I don't think there's stone on them. We added the porches. That was new. He didn't have those on Lee Street, but we had to use the front porches as our, we needed 50 square feet of private open space. So that's what happened. That helped articulate the front. Planning staff wasn't thrilled with the facade, so the ones that are currently built on Lee. So we feel like we've enhanced that facade quite a bit by adding the porches and then pulling the color palette together.
I think that looks a lot better.
Thanks.
So since you're preserving whatever trees you can, but then you've got on the townhome side, on your landscape plan, you've got the evergreen trees, type A buffer around the three sides of the property.
And a privacy fence as well.
Any other questions or comments?
Has anything about the parking changed since the first time?
We, go ahead, Holly.
I'm struggling to find it in the plan.
I was going to say, it was just the backup area, because I did note that you had on your last comment, wanted to make sure that these two stalls here were accessible. And what we generally see on all of our PRDs is they provide this little backup section that allows it to be able to be egressed. And then they also have it at a little bit slightly deeper than our standard 19 feet. So it's a 21-foot depth on the parking stall, which is two feet deeper than our standards.
What's the parking requirement?
It is only one space per bedroom, nothing for guest parking. So each of the units has three bedrooms, therefore they have three for each. And we know that Planning Commission prefers to have additional guest parking, and so that's what they've provided. But it is two spaces over the standard requirement.
I think one of the plans has four bedrooms in it, right?
I believe they all were three. I think at one time earlier, they might have specified minimum of three, but that's their maximum.
Maybe, is there a four-bedroom on the single-family side?
Yeah, there's a four-bedroom on the single-family.
But not on the townhomes.
All the parking garages detached are all three-car garages.
What'd you just say?
That the detached garages on the single-family are all three-car.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, they're 30 feet long.
Just curious, the detached garages, they have the dormers, are those faux dormers, or is there living space over the garages?
Sean, I don't, I have never, Brian has never mentioned that that would be, you know, spaced out. Yeah, it hasn't been, that's a determination you need before.
I think Sonia knows. If Sonia could come, can one of y'all come to the podium?
BNA Homes, there is no living space above the garages.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Is there a party?
I really thought we were going to lose a unit or two. And I think I really still want that. But I get to see this again at council, so I'll let you guys.
We still got to have a public hearing.
Yeah. I'm just saying, those are my.
No, this is old business.
Oh, old business, sorry.
You got told.
I got told.
Because this is the same number of units we looked at originally, correct?
Yes.
The townhome has originally had more. We've reduced the townhome count. We've never reduced the quantity of the single-family along.
I believe it's, what she's asking is the same number when it came before the Planning Commission in July.
At our public hearing.
Yes, it is.
We're basically looking at the same plan.
We are.
And it was at that public hearing that we talked about wanting a reduction in the units. And if I remember correctly, we were pretty unanimous on that. I think Mr. Halliburton was the most outspoken on it, and he's not here this evening. But in his absence, I will say that this is crowded once again. I don't know where people are going to park. I don't know where their dogs are going to go to the bathroom. They're going to park in the street, the dogs are going to go to the bathroom in the neighbor's yard. I know that, but that's a tough road to have a lot of street parking. I don't think the parking is anywhere near sufficient, Mr. Roundtree. And also, I'm not a math person. I apologize. I don't want to embarrass myself on the air, but I think there's a discrepancy, I think there's an error in the plan book. Holly, if you'll check on that, because it's still showing, what I'm seeing is three, the calculation is using three-bedroom units for the single-family homes, but we just confirmed that the homes have four bedrooms. So I just want to make sure our parking calculation is accurate.
So I thought earlier you were asking about the townhome count. So on the single-family, they actually have the three-car garage, and then they have another two spaces outside of that footprint.
So they have five parking spaces?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that sufficient for a four-bedroom house?
Yes, it is.
Because we're only required one for one?
Actually, single-family only require, in the CCO, two, period. So CCO is different than everywhere else in town. Everywhere else in town requires four for a single-family detached home.
That's why I was confused.
Yeah, so here it only requires two, and they're providing three three-car garages. I believe the one with the rear entry attached, and you can see it up on the screen, is only a two-car garage. But they also all have two additional spaces that are surface-part, adjacent to the garages. So we have five, 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 and four parking spaces on the single-family detached.
Five, five. Wait, say that again.
Five, five, four, five. That would be A, B, C, and D.
I would echo Councilwoman Avery Water's concerns over the parking, formal open space and parking on the street. I'm a little disappointed that there was no reduction in townhome count. I'm okay with the single-family count. I think that looks good. But the townhome count, there's just, yeah, no change at all of the plan that we saw three months ago. And feel as though it's just cramped. Like she said, where's a neighbor going to take their dog out to use the restroom? Or, you know, if somebody has family or friends in town and they're using up those two spots, and the other person couldn't back out of their driveway, out of their garage from the one townhome unit? I just see, I could foresee issues there. So my concerns still exist with this project, at least on the townhome side. Single-family side, like I said, I feel good about.
I agree. I can get on board with single-family.
So just for clarification, we're saying that the single-family, we're fairly okay with, but the townhomes is where you want to see the reduction in density?
Speaking for myself, yes.
For myself, yes.
Jamie, as well? Okay.
So these single-family units, y'all can, Holly, you can probably answer this for me. The smart, like, Unit B, does that say 24 feet? Is the width of the home?
Thirty, 24, 30, and 30.
Blow it up, big enough that I can see that.
Yeah, it's 30s and 24s. So B is the narrowest, and I believe A, C are the same 30-foot width.
And basically, we've got the five feet is the green space.
The green space, you have.
On either side of the home.
So between Units B and C, you've got 10 feet, which is building code requirement between buildings, and then.
So maybe only one foot green space on each side, because the rest of it's driveway.
Yeah, we have five foot on the sides, and then between the homes where there's a common driveway, we have three feet of green space. Then the driveway's shared, another three feet, and then the house. And there's 10 feet between the two homes without the shared drive, and that's repeated on the next two homes. The amount of green space, the yards are large, very deep lots, so the perception is that it's going to be, they're definitely close together as they are on Maple, as I mentioned. But they're deep, so there's quite a bit of green space related to each of the homes, the single-family homes. As far as the townhomes, my only question is, is it the quantity or just the amount of coverage on the lot? Because we may change our unit mix, rather than having all three bedrooms, maybe we can mix in a two-bedroom and, you know, just soften the footprint. We're under the densities that are allowed within the zone, so that's a little bit of a challenge, because we're under in both cases. We're not a lot under on the townhomes, but we are under the 12 to 14 units per acre. So is there any other option outside of taking the unit away, maybe changing the unit mix in terms of their widths, to give you a little bit more green space within that side of the development?
Well, I think this would have been a good opportunity for us to see that, when you brought it back for old business. I'm not an expert on the timeline here. Did we defer it last time?
My question to that would be, how would that impact parking? Would it, is there, would that make a reduction in bedroom count on the townhome side?
That's probably, I know that what Brian said at the neighborhood meeting is that the way he's budgeted this out is he needs the quantity he needs in order to make it worth his while to do it. So, but there may be some flexibility in terms of if we can change the overall volume of the building coverage. That's a possibility. That's the only thing I can really see. Because the neighbors asked for the same thing. They repeatedly asked Brian, is there any way you can take one away? And he just literally said, you know, it's just, the numbers aren't working out. You know, he referred to the competition that's happening on these lots downtown, that they're really drawing in a premium. So he's building his densities around what he feels like can be profitable and keep his quality still high on the units. One of his issues with Lee Street is he says, Lee Street's such a different animal than North Manny, that Lee has, I mean, right across from us is, he's, Lee Street is a little bit more of a risk in terms of, you know, capital investment on Lee, because it's transitioning, but it's not nearly as far along as some of the other streets that are going downtown. So he, part of his philosophy is that, you know, you want to come in, the density can help you build the quality. And the Lee Street units right down the street are doing really, really well. You know, right now, they look like a little bit of an albatross, because they're brand-new, and so much around them is not. But I know that he feels like that's, part of his equation is that he's on Lee Street. If that was another place in town, he might not feel so inclined to have to do what he's doing there. But he feels like he's really on a limb on Lee right now. And that's the justification he gave to the neighbors.
That's kind of how I feel, too. The location on Lee Street, if you drive through there, this is a massive improvement over what was previous there and what's surrounding it, on Lee Street, not talking about Manny at all. I kind of feel the same way.
But I do think, I mean, what I heard, the neighborhood meeting was about, their two concerns were, they didn't want four units on Manny, and they wanted you to preserve the trees.
Mm-hmm.
Probably not going to be able to preserve the trees, maybe a few of them. There's not much space there to have trees that you can preserve.
Now, the roots will get damaged at a minimum.
Yeah, we went, Chairman Jones, we went back out, literally to verify exact locations of the units in relationship. I talked to Matthew and Holly earlier. So we have a, you know, we have a diagram that kind of shows the trees that we think can be preserved. There's, the majority of the trees on the townhome side, actually, even though it has a little bit more density, can be preserved. There's a few, Lot Number Three has probably the majority of the large trees as far as the single-family's concerned, and there's only one of the four on that lot that possibly can be preserved. So we're going to fight. for that. All developers want to preserve trees. It's always risky because of grating and compaction, but Brian made a commitment in the neighborhood meeting, he'd make a commitment now if he were here, to say he's going to do all within his power to make sure those trees are preserved, because they're just not, I mean, they're substantially, they're big trees. I mean, they're probably 80 feet tall, and they do have a lot of character. And candidly, the neighbors were hoping that some of that character be preserved, and those trees represented that. So we're in pretty good shape on the ones on the townhomes.
I believe him when he says that. I truly think he will. I think Ms. Jones's point is that it will be very difficult, but I don't think it's in doubt that he won't try. Question, where are the HVAC units going on the townhomes?
As far as the townhomes are concerned, they'll be in the rear, on the ones on the back portion. Probably in the center one, the one that's between the two, that's probably going to be on the back, and then they'll be on this, the ones on the front more than likely will be on the back. The one on the end will probably be on the edge of the, you know, on the south side.
What?
The three townhomes on the front, I believe that the...
On Lee Street?
On Lee Street.
Okay.
Yeah, the AC units would be in the rear. And there'd be, I think there's actually, well...
But where? On that little white spot, on the little green space, they're already...
There's a little bubble up here.
Yeah, we, it is that little white dot that's shown.
Right there.
See, there's a, because it's a one-car garage, Jamie, there's a green strip behind each unit, so only one drive goes through to the garage. You double-stack the garage, and then there's a head-in parking. It'll be right on that little green patch on the rear.
Does it look okay? I still can't find it.
It's right here.
It looks to me like AC units, plural. There's an arrow that's drawn beside Unit D5. Are they going to be lined up right there?
Yeah, you're right. It says AC units.
Yeah, that, yeah, right next to the mail kiosk. I guess, I'm sorry, that's moved a little bit, but yeah. They can be stacked on that side, but we do have green space behind the actual units themselves. It's not all hardscape. That's really the point. So we have room on the end of the units, and we have room behind the units as well.
So where will the AC units on D1 through D4B?
On the rear.
Next to the porch, I guess. Fifty-square foot of opens.
So Drew just brought to my attention, on the rear units, two are in the back, and the two in units are on the side. On the front unit, they're on the sides, and then one in the rear.
So he's saying, he's saying side, side, rear. Side, side, rear, rear?
And we'll make sure that's definitive before council as well.
And it's on that same page where it says three bedrooms on the single-family homes, FYI, while we're on that pitch. We'll address that.
Okay.
And I just want to say, I think, you know, probably my biggest concern is that we deferred this when we saw it the first time, mainly is from what I think I remember, and, well, was mainly to the density. And you had a neighborhood meeting, and they had concerns on density on one side and the trees. But basically, as far as the planning commission is concerned, we're looking at exactly what we looked at the first time. Is that true?
For the most part. We changed the front facade of the townhomes along Lee. We talked to the neighbors about the justification of why the density the owner wants to keep it where it's at, and we went out and did a kind of verify the tree location to talk to the neighbors. They'll probably be at the city council meetings, so we're expecting to, and Matthew and Holly assess have a better answer, a little more accurate about what we can really do to save those trees. As far as the density's concerned, Mr. Burns has been pretty strong on why he needs it and why he would like to have it. And I think Lee, I just gave the justification for Lee Street, so that's really, he hasn't come off that position. He feels like he's taken a risk to be developing on Lee in the first place, so.
So I would guess there's no use in even discussing a possible deferral, because we'll just be looking at the same thing again, so. I would be struggling with how I would vote in favor of something that I deferred for a reason the last time, and now I'm going to sit here and say it's just okay.
I'm hearing three very strong opinions about the plan. And maybe with those three strong opinions, it's worth the deferral just to go back to the developer with those three strong opinions.
And I think one of the, you know, the biggest things in, what I believe I hear is that the main reason for, that we're looking at the same plan is because it, that's, I don't remember how you put it, what he needs to justify. You know, I think it, you know, we're going back to, I think, money here, which is not something we normally sit up here and discuss at planning commission.
Right.
That is not what we're here to do, is to make sure that every plan that you bring for us is justified, and everybody's going to make all the money they need to make, and it's just not, that's just not part of the discussion. So I hope that every developer that comes up here before us is doing something that they feel is high-quality and a betterment for our community, and that is certainly what I think we want as a planning commission. So there's no reason to have to justify that to us. I do believe that's exactly what we all want, but I don't see or appreciate that justification. For this. To look at the same thing twice.
You want to defer it?
I'm going to...
Any other questions?
I'd just like to say, I appreciate, really appreciate what you just said there. I think that's something we all needed to hear.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to defer.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, Ms. Oops?
I think, per our zoning ordinance, just to interject.
Go ahead.
Because we've deferred once, and it was deferred for three months before, I think the applicant, the only way that we can defer again is with the applicant's consent, and I'll look to Mr. Hankins to confirm that.
Yeah, sorry, I was just looking at the zoning ordinance. I think, Mr. Baumley, you're correct. If the applicant wants to request the deferral, we can defer for indefinitely, I think up to 180 days.
Okay.
If the applicant wishes to specify a specific period for the deferral to bring it back. Otherwise, it would go to a vote.
We would accept the deferral. We'll talk to Mr. Burns. He's apologized for not being here tonight. He's really the decision-maker ultimately in this decision. So we'll get with Brian this week when he gets back and walk him through. And just right now, what we're saying is we're looking for a change in the density on the townhomes primarily. I'm going to ask if we can change the overall footprint by maybe changing the room counts and still keeping the parking as substantial as it is. That would probably be something he would probably want to bring back to the table. Is that a possibility? You're saying there's no approval without a unit being dropped from the overall mix?
We'll let you make that decision.
Okay. We'll talk to Mr. Brodjar. So we would love to defer.
You didn't catch our drift.
I do. Thank you.
I'll be back and watch again.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Jacob, we have a motion and a second to defer at the request of the developer. Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Silas?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Motion defers. Next, we'll move on to our public hearings and recommendations for the city council. Our first item there tonight is an annexation petition and plan of services for approximately 32.4 acres located along New Salem Highway and Barfield Road, including 520 linear feet of Barfield Road right-of-way. World Outreach Church of Murfreesboro, Tennessee, Inc. is the applicant. Ms. Rush, good evening.
Hi, everybody. Good evening, Chair Jones, commissioners. Hope you're having a good Wednesday. Let me increase the map size just a wee bit.
I think I remember Margaret Ann's magic button combination.
Control L. Excellent.
Margaret Ann, I remember.
All right. All right, so my first item on the agenda is a request for annexation and a plan of services for approximately 32.43 acres. The property owner is World Outreach Church. They did submit this request for a petition. The property, as you can see on the map, is located along the south side of New Salem Highway, and it is a portion of their property. It's 31.71 acres. The staff had also recommended that be studied a segment of the Barfield Road. There was a segment between the city limits. The city limits are in the grayish shade tone on the map, and the yellow areas are the areas that are recommended and part of the petition and annexation study. So the 520 linear feet of Barfield Road for a total of .72 acres. There is no zoning application accompanying with this, so as, if this was to be annexed into the city, it would come in with a zoning designation of RS-15. The study area is located within the city of Murfreesboro's urban growth boundary and is contiguous to the city limits, as noted on the map. You can see where the city limit signs are pointing, so it's basically all the gray areas are the city limits to the north, and then also further to the east. A plan of services was prepared by staff and included in your staff report and agenda packet, and it did demonstrate that the city services can be provided for the subject property. Staff is recommending approval of the annexation for this property for the following reasons. The study area is contiguous with the existing city limits and is within the Murfreesboro urban growth boundary. The study area is in the service infill area of the adopted 2035 comprehensive plan, future land use map. And thirdly, the city services can be provided to the subject property upon annexation. The planning commission will need to conduct a public hearing for this item, and following the discussion, then formulate a recommendation for the city council. The applicant's representative, I believe, SEC, is here by Rob Moulton, and he'll be providing a brief presentation. Thank you. We don't have a PowerPoint? No presentation? He's just here to look good. Okay. I'm happy to answer any questions from the planning commission on this item.
Okay. Any questions before we open the public hearing?
Okay.
Okay. Then we will open the public hearing for this item. We'll ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak. If you do come forward to the podium, please state your name and address. Make all your comments to the planning commission. Keep your comments limited to three minutes, and we'll wait to hear from anybody that would like to speak on this item. Anybody here tonight for this item? Okay. We'll close the public hearing. Do we have any other comments or questions from the planning commission on this?
No.
Straightforward.
If there are none, I'll move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Jacob? Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Silas?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye. Motion carries.
Our next item is a zoning application to amend the existing PUD zoning. Hidden Rivers Estates PUD. It's on 121 acres located along Casin Trail and Racket Club Drive. Hidden River Holding Company LLC is the developer. Ms. Rush?
Thank you. So again, the applicant, Hidden River Holding Company LLC, represented by Mr. Brian Burns, is requesting to amend the Hidden River Estates Plan Unit District. The reason for this is, one of the segments, it's called the cottages, those townhomes were redesigned from a two-story townhouse design to a single-story house design while retaining the same amount of floor area within the houses. So by doing the math, as you can imagine, the building footprint for each of these units basically kind of doubled in size. And as a result, it minimized or reduced the amount of area that the number of units that were approved could be constructed. So this amendment is basically a request to reduce the total number of units, the total number of townhomes from 620 overall to 566 units, which is a net decrease of 54 townhomes. There is a bit of a blend change that accompanied that. So the cottages specifically were reduced from 236 to 166. The villas increased from 196 to 257, so they were able to pick up some additional units in that particular portion of the development. The landings reduced from 106 to 61. The River Row, which are the large homes that are fronting along the trail, had no changes. Those remain at 64 units. And the estates, which are the large, single-family detached homes, also did not have any change. Those remain at 17 total. So as you have a reduction in the total number of units, it also results in a reduction in the amount of density. So it went from 5.16 dwelling units to the acre to 4.60 dwelling units to the acre. Correspondingly is a reduction in parking spaces. Some of those are dispersed throughout the development. There was also a reduction in some of the open space areas, again, because the units had to get realigned in different areas, and so they were sited a little bit closer than they were previously in the original approval. And then there was also, finally, modifications to the detention ponds. Some of them had to be shifted and relocated. Some of them also had to have their size altered to accommodate this change. So as we normally look at, we do talk about other things that the amendment is affected by. So we look at the adjacent zoning and land uses, so those don't change. It's, the neighborhood is primarily RS-10 and RS-15, single-family detached zoning districts to the west and to the north and to the south. The future land use map of the Murfreesboro 2035 does designate this area as auto-urban residential. So the change, again, it's reducing the number of units, but it does remain consistent with that AUR designation. So as such, we're asking the commission tonight to conduct a public hearing to discuss the matter and then formulate a recommendation for the city council. The applicant's representatives, Mr. Clyde Roundtree, are here for their presentation, and I will, I'm happy to answer any questions from the commission at this time, or following the presentation, or any other comments made by the public. Thank you.
Any questions before we hear from Mr. Roundtree? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Rush.
You're welcome.
Mr. Roundtree can't wait to get back to the podium. Welcome back.
I appreciate you all very much. I know it's not easy. And I can say, I'm Clyde Roundtree, I listen to engineering, and I'm here with Manley Tweed, who's the engineer on this project, as well as our clients. Drew Averson is here, if we have any specific questions. It's Mr. Brian Burns is somewhere other than here tonight, so. But with that in mind, I do want to just acknowledge that, that your job's tough, and I know it. And our job's tough, too, because we're all trying to do the best we can to maximize the opportunities that are before us. And I can honestly say, and joyfully say this, that I've got clients that are asking about coming to Murfreesboro, and they ask about what it's like and how's the city. And I said, you know, I said it's well-led, and it's well-governed, and they're going to hold the integrity of the products really high, so it's a safe place to invest. And that's what I believe. I know it's kind of a tough thing, because we're all trying to do the best we can, but I... I really respect what you do. I know it's really difficult. And so, with that in mind, Hidden River, it's not really a formal presentation, except for an exciting project to be a part of. Mr. Burns, it was, one of the reasons I really enjoy working with Brian is that he's very creative in solving problems, and this was a challenging site. Most people thought it would never get passed, because there's just so much density in that area, and Caseon Lane has so many traffic issues. And just to take us back in history, Mr. Burns ended up acquiring the land to the south of the Hidden River Development to create another subdivision that gave us access really directly onto New Salem Road, and that, to me, was some of the best ownership design that I've seen. He just really learned how to navigate through it. And the proof is in the pudding. In our first neighborhood meeting, we had the news there. Everyone had a shirt on, and they were so against this project. And now, you know, two years later, two and a half years later, maybe longer, time's gone by, but we had five people at our neighborhood meeting, and one was a resident of the community asking if his rent's going to go up. So, it was, it's amazing how far it's come, but that's a credit to Brian and his follow-through on the site, you know, trying to do his best to keep it clean, keep it organized, keep it safe, all the things that he's committed to do, and really created a traffic safety valve for that neighborhood, that now it's not nearly the issue that they had before. So, to Brian's credit, I just want to say, I'm just so glad that he was able to pull that off and did a great job doing it. As far as overall, as Marina mentioned, the footprints of the cottages changed, which changed the overall complexion of the layout for the cottages. And due to the fact that we're losing units in the cottages, Brian made it up on the villas. So, it was really kind of a, you know, we still didn't make up all the units, as Marina mentioned, there was fifty-four that we didn't get to, that we lost in the overall development. But from the get-go, Hidden Rivers has always been about the river. It's always been about green space. It's always been about walkability. It's always been about recreation. So, although we lost some green space in the cottage area itself, you know, we lost around twenty to thirty percent of the green space in that specific location between those homes, they were always on kind of a green belt surrounding the cottages. So, the whole development has this kind of green belt feel, and that was the goal, that there would be a lot of access to green space around the development. So, the development overall is way over the thirty percent required. So, we feel like we haven't lost any integrity in this decision as far as the overall concept of Hidden River Estates. And so, with that, if you have any specific questions, I'm here to answer them. These are some pictures that just show you. If you haven't been out there yet, these are the road that are under construction. I mean, that is how they're looking if you went out there today. So, they're in progress. This is the villas. That's along the main access drive. That's, I mean, that was the rendering of how they're going to look, and that's actually the field. So, we're really excited, the quality, people are loving it out there. And these are the cottages. These are the ones that are in question. These are the ones that kind of changed the footprint overall. So, that's the cottages, but they haven't been constructed yet. And these are the estate lots that go along the river, the larger lots in the back portion of the property. And then, the amenity center is intact and in place, so the folks already have their pool in place. There's two other amenity centers that are online that are coming in the future as it continues to develop out, but right now, so far, so good as far as how it's moving. Quality's solid. The neighbors are happy. And with that in mind, if you have any questions, glad to answer them, but we're excited about where Hidden Rivers is going.
Okay, any questions before we open the public hearing? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Roundtree. We'll open the public hearing and ask for anybody to come forward that would like to speak on this item tonight.
Good evening, Ms. Jones and Commission. My name is Mike Green, and I wish I had the same enthusiasm that Mr. Roundtree does. Neighbors are not happy.
And can you state your address, too?
Oh, yes, ma'am. Gaston Court, yes, ma'am.
What is it?
Gaston Court.
Do you have to have the street number? Street number?
Two one zero seven.
Two one zero seven. Thank you so much.
Oh, yes, ma'am. I wish I could share the same enthusiasm, but the neighbors are not happy. I showed up tonight and a couple of other folks, because there's really not any reason to show up, but I appreciate the fact that they are going to have less units, but the woods are still going to be destroyed. I thought it was interesting that they're preserving trees. I would invite all of you to please come out and look at the absolute destruction of the woods. You know, this was an opportunity that we started back in 2019, Ms. Jones, and you'll remember, for a wonderful opportunity for this city to have an urban forest for children to go to and see and play and be in, right in the middle of all of our exciting growth and stuff that we have. But yet, it's been allowed to be completely destroyed, and it's going to continue to be destroyed. Once again, like I said, I'm very happy that there's going to be less units, but it's still not going to make any difference. As far as the hundred-foot buffer that we were promised on East View and Stony Meadow, it doesn't exist. They've torn down all the trees, all the way back to everyone's boundary of their backyard. Please come out and look at this. Traffic and speeding are still rampant. We still cannot get in and out of the intersection. This new road that they built, they're going to ninety-nine, is congested all the time. We asked for police protection. By the way, our police department does a wonderful job in this city. We asked for police to come out and set up a roadblock or set up speed traps, and so they set out the little machine that shows you how fast you go, and that's it. Mr. Wright, I've had a chance to meet with him and talk to him about a couple of things. If you really want to generate some funds in this town, I guarantee you, you can write tickets all day long on River Rock. We get past at least once a month, sometimes twice a month, people going fifty and sixty miles per hour. Once again, the other thing I'd like to bring up is about the dynamite blasting. Who takes responsibility for that? Whenever we brought this up, they said, "Well, your house is twenty years old, so it's just settling." No one takes any responsibility for it. The houses shake daily, on a daily basis with all the blasting. So, ladies and gentlemen, I would just like to encourage you to come out and just look at what this is and just take a stroll through and look. And I know that we can't go back, can't change anything, but if there's some way to preserve some of the nature, some of the diversity, in this wonderful section of our town with all of the growth that's around it, it would be a wonderful thing for us to be able to do. And I thank you all for your time.
Thank you for coming out, Mr. Green. We appreciate it. Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Mariah Phillips, and I currently live at 511 East Clark Boulevard here in Murfreesboro. I used to live at thirteen thirty-two Dodd Trail, but after the fight that hundreds of my neighbors got together and fought against this Hidden River development, and we failed, I decided to move closer to downtown Murfreesboro, where my son went to school, so I could get there in under forty-five minutes. I don't have a whole lot to say, and I actually didn't prepare anything until I sat down here, but I do, like Mike, appreciate the fact that Brian Burns has reduced the number of units, but I'm sure that that was a fiscal decision and not one that was made for the betterment of the community. I stood with hundreds of my neighbors against this, and only, I think Kathy, you might have been there, Ms. Jones, you were there. I don't think anybody else was here when this place was full. Session after session of community members, that the news was here, as was mentioned, because we did not want this in our community, and traffic was terrible. I'm wondering if there is a traffic study that's been done since the building of the development. I know that there's not a whole lot that can be done to end the destruction and devastation that has already been approved by the planning commission, but I'm just wondering if we can think a little further ahead and make sure that we don't continue to repeat the same mistakes again by allowing some reckless development in our community. It's not a credit to Brian that only five people showed up. It's not because everybody loved the project. It's because the community members are frustrated, they're burned out, and they're hopeless that anything that they're going to say is actually going to make a difference. But I'm here today hoping that we can look a little further at some of these plans that are coming through and making sure that it is in the best interest of our community here in Murfreesboro. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Anybody else like to come up and speak tonight? Okay. If not, we will close the public hearing and do have a couple of questions we might try to answer.
Before your questioning, can I just?
Yes, go ahead.
I didn't catch your name, sir, but Mike, I heard your first name.
Mike Green.
Mike Green, sorry, Mr. Green. I'm emailing Chief Bowen right now about the speeders in the area, so I'm taking care of that right now.
Yes, sir, thank you, Chris. We had spoken about the Racket Club thing, I don't know if you recall?
Yes, sir.
Us meeting at the school and everything?
Yes, sir.
The bridge, I guess, the thing that's going on about the actual tennis court, but, yes, sir, it's very frightening.
Thank you.
Yep.
People with children are walking up and down River Rock, you know, the little vine
lane, there's nothing to curb it.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Thank you. And what, the hundred-foot buffer that's supposed to be there, that'll be built after?
I actually was going to defer to Mr. Clyde Roundtree, because he's the landscape architect on that program book. I don't recall a hundred-foot buffer, but I do defer to Clyde on that one to answer. I could respond to the second question, which was about the dynamite blasting. So, I believe it's our fire department that has oversight, so if there is an issue, to contact them.
Fire marshal's office.
Fire marshal's office, thank you. And then, the third question I heard was if there was a traffic study, if there was something that was done as a follow-up, and no traffic studies are done before a project, and so it's typical, not to, we don't do a follow-up, because it's to mitigate for impacts, and that new road segment that was in the presentation was the primary mitigation, and that has been constructed. And I drive it almost daily, and it's, I find it very successful, very easy to get cut through to New Salem, so. If there were any other questions, I'd be happy to respond, but those were the three I jotted down. And I defer to Mr. Roundtree.
Roundtree, tell us, since we don't have time to read the, I'm sure we can find it in this book somewhere, in the plan book, about the buffers that are required?
There's a landscape buffer sheet. There's not a hundred-foot buffer identified. I think that we may be quoting that we're going to do our best to preserve the materials that along the greenway. I was talking to Drew. Right now, if along the back portion of the property, the western property line, the buffers haven't been established yet, haven't been planted, because there's, the construction's just getting through on that section, and along that back property line, there's some places where a lot of the natural trees were saved, quite a good distance. There's some where there's nothing at all, and that has not been planted yet, the re-establishing buffer. But for the most part, along the western edge where all the existing homes were, I know they did their best all along that way, but there are some places where there are holes that will be filled in eventually with the landscape plan gets implemented along that property line. But that, as far as the hundred-foot, I'm not really referencing that in my mind, where that commitment was made. It might have been the distance off of the greenway, potentially. I don't believe it's clearly stated in the book anywhere, but it might have been quoted somewhere.
So, excuse me, so is there any real, in the plans, when we have a plan book like this, at what point are, is there a set time, buffers are required to be finished, or in each section along the way?
That would be part of the final inspection for each phase, to ensure that those buffers have been planted as the buildings are constructed with each phase.
Each phase, thank you.
And on page twenty-nine is their landscape plan, where they identified the buffers along that western property line. It's twenty-nine.
I reduced the PowerPoint presentation. I don't have twenty-nine with me, but.
So, in the plan book, on page twenty-nine, where you're looking at Mr. Blomley, and I think many of us can see that, it says, "Minimum fifteen-foot existing vegetation to remain undisturbed where feasible," and it's basically pointing, it looks like a tree row, looks like all the way around the development. I guess that's backing up to the existing?
Yes.
Residential properties? So, when it says that in the plan book like that, "To remain undisturbed where feasible," when it does get disturbed, do they have to replace it?
Yes.
Or does it have to say that for it to be required?
No, I think on this particular sheet, they could probably improve their labeling. I've got that kind of zoomed in a little bit. I think Clyde is the intention not to, along that entire property line, fill in gaps where, to achieve a type B buffer.
Yes, sir. Yeah, that's our intention.
I think with only the one label pointing to a type B buffer, I think it kind of gives the impression that the type B buffer is only on that one portion, and that they're just protecting existing trees where the other label is. So, I think they could improve their labeling prior to council to confirm and clarify that along that entire property line, they're proposing a type B buffer and that existing vegetation to remain where feasible.
So, some of it will be from existing vegetation, the rest of it will be filled in to make sure there is a type B buffer all the way around?
Yes.
And if we could just make sure that's clarified, I think, counsel.
And I think the hundred feet that he may be referring to is that we intentionally, along the road, that the larger homes along the river, we tried to put all of our stormwater management on the backside of those buildings to get them as far away off the greenway as possible, so between the greenway, the existing vegetation along the greenway, our stormwater, and then our parkings weighted on the backside, those buildings were as far away as we could put them from the greenway. So, that's probably close to a hundred feet. I don't want to quote that specifically, but that was the intention, is to pull those units as far away as possible, still take advantage of the view, but put as much green space between those buildings and the actual greenway itself, and that's probably real close to a hundred feet.
I have a question. On Phase One A, have the buffer, is it in place now in Phase One A?
Drew, do we know?
Drew Alderson with Hidden River Development Company. Commissioner Harris, we are in about an eighty percent phase or completion on Phase One A. That buffer line specifically with what abuts to the existing houses, we had to take quite a bit of the trees out because they were dead, dying, or actually flooded, because that area does flood quite often. So, in order to perform the necessary stormwater and erosion control, we did eliminate a lot of trees on there that we will replace, and especially as we get into spring, we'll fill those in as they come in. And we've done the same thing on the opposite side with River Row, where it abuts up against the greenway, and that to clear out a lot of those dead trees, make it look more presentable. That way, when we go back and fill in, what's there can graft in with what we're adding. So, it does create that line of tree buffer all the way around the properties.
So, you're eighty percent, so when you get to a hundred, maybe in the spring, you're going to finish the buffer for One A?
Correct. We'll get it more filled in then, because now, as we're going into winter, if we start planting things in there, we're just throwing good trees after bad.
I get what season is, but I was just concerned about, we've got, you know, neighbors here complaining about the buffer, and I want to know that One A is almost completed. Have that buffer been completed? So, that was my question.
I would say the buffer's about forty percent from where we've cleaned it and rebuilt it, and then we'll finish it up as we're progressing through the rest of that phase.
All right, thank you.
I was in Hidden River.
I was in Hidden River this weekend. It's still very much, um, a work in progress. I was not on the commission or on council when this came through or passed the first time, but as, so as to the changes that are being proposed today, I am okay with all of these. Um, I have no problem. So I'll make a motion, we approve. Subject to all staff comments. We've already had our public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Ms. Jako.
Ms. Safel Water?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye. Okay. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, our next item, Item C is a zoning application to amend the existing vintage apartments and TDK Office PUD on eleven-point-three acres, and to rezone approximately two-point-five acres from CH to PUD, located along Medical Center Parkway, Robert Rose Drive, and Maple Grove Drive. TDK Construction is the applicant. Ms. Green, good evening.
Good evening, Ms. Jones, Planning Commission members. Thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. Our next public hearing is for you to consider a zoning request made to our office for a property that consists of two parcels that have two different zonings on them. The map on the screen shows you the location of the property. It's both the orange and the green color that you see on the screen. This property is, um, zoned PUD, and that's the orange area, that's about eleven-point-three acres, and CH, Commercial Highway District, which is about two-point-five acres, and it is located at the, which is a total of thirteen-point-seven acres. It's on the corner of Medical Center Parkway, Maple Grove Drive, and Robert Rose Drive. All three are public rights-of-way. Maple Grove Drive is a short, short section of right-of-way that runs between the Gallisters and Culvers, so that helps locate the property. To the, um, west, the property that's zoned CH is the Avenue's Lifestyle Center. Not only is it zoned CH, but it's zoned Plan Signage Overlay. Recently, the Planning Commission, um, considered an application to rezone the frontage parcels in this area from CH to PCD, Plan Commercial District. That's not effective yet, so the maps and all the, the items before you show the existing zoning for the properties. This property was zoned Mixed Use District when the city created that in 2013. Um, the Mixed Use District was a new district to us at the time, and the city took initiative to rezone properties that are located within Gateway Design Overlay District to this new district. One of the stipulations of the Mixed Use District is that it can only be in properties that have the Gateway Design Overlay District due to the, um, standards that do apply for the gateway. Sometime after the creation of that district, City Council became aware of multifamily consuming much of the Mixed Use zoning, and so put some parameters on the amount of multifamily that can be in the MU zone. And so it limited, based on acreage and master planning, the amount of apartments. In June of the, or, in June of 2022, the Planning Commission City Council considered an application from TDK, who had a contract to purchase the property, from Sterling, the previous property owner, to rezone the properties as they are today. That was approved. It was, staff shared with the applicants that multifamily would not be permitted on any of the property because it is a part of a lot, larger master plan of the Robert Rose Village West. And so just to the south where you see Mixed Use District are properties, uh, that are the Everwood Gateway Apartments. And so the applicants did, um, put together a program book for your consideration. The Planning Commission and City Council both, both did recommend approval of that. That zoned most of the property to PUD. There was not a specific plan for the corner, so the applicants, in a good-faith effort to show that they didn't want multifamily on that corner, rezoned it from Mixed Use to Commercial Highway District. That was, um, the same type of action that the, uh, Heinz company did for Clary Park across the street, for the parcels that are on, along Medical Center Parkway, they rezoned it to CH. In exchange for having the multifamily as a part of this development, the applicants presented a plan that included a, um, a several-story office building along Robert Rose Drive that would create a corporate office space with a minimum square footage of sixty thousand feet, square feet, but it could go up to sixty-five. The request you have today is essentially two parts. It's to amend the PUD that you see on the screen, and I'll go through the details in just a moment, and it is to rezone the CH property to PUD as well, so that all the property will be, be zoned PUD. But part of it's existing, so it's considered an amendment. The PUD amendment proposes to keep the apartment portion of the plan vastly similar. It is, um, the plan that's approved has a thirteen-thousand-square-foot minimum of retail, office, restaurant, urban storefront on the first floor of those apartments. They're not proposing to change that, and so they will still have at least that thirteen-thousand-square-feet. They're also maintaining the same number of apartments. They were approved for two-hundred-and-thirty-two apartments, and the proposed change, um, keeps up the same, with the same bedroom mix that was approved initially. And then, so, really, what is, what has the most significant change, and I'm gonna go to a, just a concept plan that makes it a little bit easier, is the common space access drive is actually becoming its own lot of record. So because it's becoming its own lot of record, it's creating expectations and design standards, and, um, this Lot Three is being included into, in the plan development. This space remains largely as proposed. And then the office building is located along Robert Rose Drive, which is that reduction that we'll talk about in just a moment. I did do just a simple chart, and I think the applicants will have a chart as well, and I'll go to my staff comments, that just shows the changes that are proposed. You can see that the multifamily units are the same, the, um, commercial mixed with the apartments, the same. The office building was proposed as a five-story structure with a rooftop, um, amenity. They're saying that it could possibly be a one-story structure, but still could be multi-story structure, so you can see that there are a couple images in the program book, but the difference is that it could be a single-story structure. And the, um, minimum office space, which previously was sixty thousand square feet, is being proposed to be twelve thousand square feet. Now, they are opening up an opportunity in this building to have at least eight thousand square feet of retail or restaurant space. So the building that was the office will have a minimum size of twenty thousand square feet. But rather than being sixty to sixty-five thousand office, it would be twelve thousand office at a minimum, and potentially eight thousand retail or restaurant, and so that's the most significant change to the, um, plan development. Restaurants and our zoning ordinance have the highest parking demand or parking calculation. They actually require three times the parking as office spaces, and so the, um, phasing or the parking plan may, um, change a bit depending on who the tenants are for these units. But, um, that, it will essentially look similar, but it, it would affect the uses that go in the buildings. The initial project did include six exceptions, and you can read those in the program book. They're on pages thirty-three to thirty-seven. In the staff report, the ones in blue, I was trying to find a way to make it easier for you to identify them, the ones in blue were approved already with the existing project, so not all of them are new. The, um, twenty-one additional ones are, um, that are in just black print will be the, the project, or the exceptions that are new to this project. And really focus on that common area parcel that I, I mentioned, um, creating it as a separate parcel creates design criteria, criteria. It won't be, it'll really be more like a, um, well, it'll be common area, but it'll have, it'll have frontage on it. And then that lot on the corner, there are, there's a tenant. I think that they want to go there, and they know what they'd like to have there, and so with having that information, they've been able to look at our design standards and see, um, what they need or what would like to request for this tenant to be located on the corner. And so, really, the exceptions, the new ones, um, are for that, the common area drive and the Lot Three that's on the corner. The future land use map does recommend a general commercial character for the area. Now, obviously, the apartments don't fit into that category, but that was something that was, is already approved, and so, um, with the mixed use of adding the commercial on the first floor of the apartments, they were wanting to make sure to still meet the amount of commercial offered, but also have that residential. But the proposed, um, out parcel and the office and commercial building would fit within that land use character. So staff, um, request that you conduct a public hearing this evening to consider this application. The applicants have prepared some information that they would like to share with you on the zoning amendment and the rezoning, and they'll be available for questions, as will staff, either before or after the public hearing. Do you have anything for me before the applicants come up?
Can I ask, just real quick, so I'm just looking at page nine, I think it's of their plan book. Uh, Lot Two, so it says that the office slash retail slash restaurant building is one to five stories and twenty thousand to sixty-five thousand square feet, okay? Didn't, didn't the table up above say that it was reducing it from sixty thousand to twelve thousand?
Sure. Um, the developer really wants to find a way to be as flexible as possible. However, plan development zoning requires specifics in the plan, and in planning, we have minimum standards when we look at development. So we have to set a minimum or a floor to development. The four, Lot Two, at a minimum, it has to be twelve thousand square foot office. They could potentially do the sixty thousand square foot office, but they also, with this amendment, could do twelve thousand. With the current zoning, the only thing available is a minimum sixty thousand square foot office.
Right.
They cannot put retail or restaurant in this building. Again, restaurant has a high parking demand. So if restaurant takes up the space, they're definitely gonna need to decrease the amount of office space to be sure to comply with the parking exceptions in the book. But when I present it to you, I wanna give you the minimum standards. They can exceed that possibly, um, but I just want you to understand, the minimum has gone from sixty to twelve with that eight thousand square foot.
The minimum.
Mm-hmm.
And, and the, the.
That's what I meant. Okay, so that was the minimum. That's what I thought we were saying. Over here was a twelve thousand square foot, and over here we're saying it's a minimum of twenty, so I didn't wanna just.
They're adding the eight thousand square foot retail, commerce, restaurant. That was not a part of the original plan. The original plan was a corporate office, and so now they want to have a twenty thousand square foot building, but only twelve thousand office, and then the rest could be, um, restaurant, retail.
So you're saying this page nine is the actual, as, as far as if you're looking at this plan book, it could be anywhere from twenty thousand to sixty-five thousand. It could be one story, two, three, or four, or five stories.
That's what they're asking for.
It can be office, retail, or restaurant, and that's the part of the book that would, that's, that's what they have to go by right there. That's their, what they can work within.
Yes, that's what they can.
Not having to say it's the twelve thousand, one, one story.
So twelve thousand, they could do a twelve thousand office, right, yeah.
Okay.
And they.
That's what I missed.
It gets a little confusing.
Just the minimum.
They've got two illustrations. On the screen now is, if it's possibly two-story, but of course, remember, they can do a one-story.
Mm-hmm.
Um, without the rooftop, I don't know what it is, rooftop gathering space.
Mm-hmm.
And then the other is, this is the original plan.
All right.
They could possibly, potentially, maybe still do that, but the commitment is not that they absolutely will do that as it is today. And so they included both images just to give you an idea of what it possibly could be. Um, whereas the plan was specific about this being a requirement, they, they're wanting to change that minimum.
Okay.
And possibly allow, well, this shows two, but probably a single-story structure.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. Okay, any other questions before we open the public hearing?
I think they, they would like to present.
Give us a little presentation.
Great.
Welcome, Mr. Melchon. Come on up. Good to see you.
Good evening, Chair Jones, members of Planning Commission, Rob Mulch from SEC. I'm accompanied tonight by Mr. Ross Bradley and John David Blankenship with TDK. Um, we're here tonight to present to you a brief presentation, if I can make it quick and painless, hopefully. Presentation regards to the amendment to the PUD for TDK Corporate and Headquarters and Vintage Mixed Use. Um, we've given a little overview, and you do know the property is at the southwest corner of, uh, Robert, uh, sorry, Medical Center Parkway, and, um, looking at the zoning that we've got on the property, sorry, I apologize. This was the existing zoning today in relationship to what Margaret Ann talked about. This is being PUD on the southern portion, and the northeastern corner of the property on the corner is zoned CH. And so our amendment is for looking at, combining all the lots into one unified PUD in development on that side. So instead of there being two-point-four-nine acres, zoned CH, we wanna pull it all back together, so it'll be thirteen-point-four-seven, seventy-four acres, all in with PUD on that side. This will allow for us to continue moving forward with the development as it was approved last year. This was the plan last year. As you can see, this is the PUD portion of the plan. In the upper right-hand corner, that white space was the CH portion on that side. So coming forth with the new project this year, and then that will be pointed in the CH to make this all one unified PUD. We've now added in a concept in relationship to that corner, in relationship to a potential tenant that we're looking at on that side. As Margaret Ann talked about, some of the design standards we'll talk about coming forward here as I move through the presentation, related to the development of this being turned into more or less four lots in relationship to the property on that side. So as you can see, the pink area, what, what we call Lot One is the residential mixed-use parcel. As Margaret Ann talked about, there's very little change to that. We're still staying with the same program elements on that side. And then once you got to the right-hand side, Lot Two, the yellow area on that side, that's the office that we just spoke about in regards to whether it's, you know, from giving us the range from one story to five stories, or from twelve thousand to sixty-five thousand square feet, uh, opportunity on that side. Lot Three was with the previously zoned CH zone on that side in regards to that commercial tenant put on there. And Lot Four, if you wanna call it Lot Four, is the blue area, which is what we call the common access lot on that side. So that's more or less, as Margaret Ann talked about, that inclusion of creating that Lot Four for making that, that common access driver a private lot as it required us to come through and look for all these additional exceptions that we've outlined in the book on that side. Um, we talked about this in regards to Lot One, mixed use, again, you know, four-story, um, buildings A, B, and C, which are the ones that front onto the shared driveway that goes east to west on that side. Those will still remain with the opportunities for thirteen thousand square foot, and we're asking for a little bit of extra room in there for up to fifteen thousand square foot of glum for retail on those buildings as those fronted storefronts on that side, and also the opportunity to remove the shovelboard amenity as we're kind of rearranging our amenities package. Building materials are still consistent with what was originally approved in that side, brick, fiberglass board, aluminum curtain wall. As you can see, as I was talking about before, the three buildings, A, B, and C, on the northern portion of this, or what we talked about, it has the true mixed use with the retail on the ground floor, and three stories of residential above. The yellow building, which is Building D, is still being consistent with the previously approved book, and that is all four stories of residential. Again, some of the character images, this is looking at, along that common access drive, you can see some of the potential storefronts retail-wise on the lower floor with the residential above, some of the outdoor courtyard spaces, still preserving all that. Again, this is the main amenity, which is kind of encapsulated with inside B, C, and D on that side. So you've got a fitness center and a, a rooftop terrace area, the pool, all those kinds of amenities that were in the previous books still continuing forward. Office, Lot Number Two is what we're calling an office building on that side. We talked about looking at this from giving us allowance for a range from either one story up to five stories, and still maintaining our seventy-five-foot maximum building height. Again, allowing us to work from either twelve thousand square foot to sixty-five thousand square foot of office space, but also allowing us to now include potentially additionally eight thousand square feet of retail space or restaurant space on the lower floor of that building. And then also taking and moving the rooftop terrace or outdoor patio area to making that an optional element based on however the building gets in regards to stories and/or tenants that we're looking at, looking at, trying to build this building for. And then there's out front along, uh, Robert Rose. There was previously in the other plan, a reflecting pool, fountain area out there along that outdoor front streetscape element on that side, looking at wanting to remove that because it's more of an operational issue over time. We all know that fountains, especially in the wintertime, are not very operationally friendly, so we're looking at some opportunities to remove that and expand that outdoor plaza space out there, so we're creating a much better, more, more defined space along the front of the building. Again, same building, the building materials as last time. And again, Margaret Ann kinda showed you what we were originally anticipating with the fi- five-story element on that side, the outdoor terrace living spaces on that. element on that side, the outdoor terrace living spaces on that. And then again, potentially, what we could see is if this was a two-story mock-up of this building being from an office and with some retail and/or restaurant on the bottom floor. Lot 3, this is the biggest change we talked about in regards to removing it from the CH, pulling in the PUD, looking at a potential commercial tenant. So what we're looking at here again is a 35-foot, and still staying with 35-foot maximum heights. All exterior materials will be masonry, and this will be a one-story only building on that side. Again, we'll also still be remaining with our same restrictions we had on the building before, on the parcel itself before in regards to not allowing for, you know, not-wanted tenants in regards to gas stations, automobile, liquor, tobacco, that kind of stuff. So we're still adhering to those restrictions on the lot itself. Getting back into this, looking at it from a pedestrian standpoint, since we're now more or less incorporating the Lot 3 into the plan, we kind of expanded our pedestrian realm in regards to showing that access along Robert Rose, Medical Center Parkway, and also the access along that common shared driveway along 3, leading, allowing for another access point for pedestrians to come in off of Medical Center and back into the property. Again, a very walkable, urbanized type of environment. Give you some sense of some of the streetscape along that common shared space with the retail in the lower portions of the buildings. Vehicular-wise, again, we're looking at, you know, still incorporating the same on the southern, or as you said, the southern portion down there at the property, being able to have that connection between the avenue back to Robert Rose. The middle portion, we talked about in regards to that open, that common space, and then also now the inclusion of that driveway between McAllisters and our Lot 3 for additional vehicular connectivity besides pedestrian connectivities. With this, we've asked for a number of exceptions, and like Margaret Ann spoke to, the main reason for these exceptions is that we're now kind of more or less creating four lots on this property. So that's the reason we've got, requesting an additional 22, and by creating these lot lines, they kind of create some, you know, they kind of conflict with the existing design standards, and that we're asking these exceptions because of this being a plan that we've already kind of already got set up. Now we're adding parcel lines to this, kind of has a lot of conflict. So kind of going through these and looking at this one in regards to when you're looking at the overall PUD, requesting the exceptions not to provide landscape buffers along proposed parcel internal property lines. So what we're doing by putting a property line in there, what was previously a 10-foot-wide landscape bed in the middle between some parking areas, by putting that property line in there, it's actually required to be wider. So what we're asking the exception for on those kinds of exceptions is to remove that so we can still maintain the 10-foot, because all we're doing is actually putting a property line in there to divide it up into four separate parcels. Again, with the, with the common shared space on that side, too, we're looking at it from this being a, what was a private, is still a private driveway going through it, but now you're creating a lot. And when we look at it from a photometric standpoint and putting lights along that drive, we would then have to adhere to not exceeding .5-foot candles at the property lines, which would not be feasible when you look at it from the standpoint of these being, this driveway being an actual lot now. We wouldn't be able to maintain having light for the streets without exceeding the .5. So anything that's internal, as you can see in the yellow areas here, we would like to go ahead and ask the exception to allow for that to be exceeded because it's actually still part of the overall development, and it's also providing lighting for the safe pedestrian environments that we're providing with the development along that street corridor on that side. Again, here, a couple more of the exceptions and kind of outlining that just individually in regards to Lot 1. Again, this is Lot 2 in regards to those exceptions on that side. Again, we're asking for some reductions in the required planting yards along the streets, so more or less by creating that parcel line, trying to minimize that so we can go back to keeping the urban character and not having, having that excessive landscape area in there. Again, Lot 3, this, again, because this is the newest one, and we've got a potential tenant we're looking at on this and looking at, you know, regards to the reduction in the landscape yard between parking lots and perimeters, landscape yard separations between access drives and such like that. So we're asking for those exceptions on that to provide that character. And again, the main one, of course, is the shared common access drive. Appreciate your time and consideration of this. I'm available for any questions now or after the public hearing.
Okay, any questions before we open the public hearing?
Thank you all.
Mr. Malchin. All right, we will open the public hearing and ask if we have anybody that would like to come forward tonight to speak on this item. Is that there? Okay. If there are none, we will close the public hearing and ask for any other comments or questions from the Planning Commission.
If there are none, I make a motion to approve all staff with all staff comments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Jacob?
Ms. Eva Water?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you all very much. Our next item is a street renaming. It's to rename a segment of Blackman Road, south of Pendleton Boulevard, to Blackman Beasley Court. City of Murfreesboro Planning Department is the applicant, Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening, Madam Chair and Planning Commissioners. This is a street renaming request that has, that has arisen out of, out of the realignment of Blackman Road. So you'll see the, the blue area on the map before you is the realigned Blackman Road that is currently under construction as a part of the West Lawn Commercial East development. And it's going to leave a remnant of Blackman Road, the existing remnant of Blackman Road there in the yellow. And much like the remnant of Shores Road, which turned into Birch Tree Road or Birch Tree Drive across Veterans Parkway, this remnant segment of Blackman Road will be terminated in a cul-de-sac. Now, the new alignment of Blackman Road will be, will be at a much more desirable geometric alignment than what was constructed with the construction of Veterans Parkway by, by TDOT. And this, this realignment was actually envisioned as, as early as 2008, when the West Lawn PUD was approved back 15 years ago. So much like with Shores Road, we are bringing this request to rename the segment of Blackman Road, and what we are, what we are recommending is Blackman Beasley Court, which retains a part of the existing street name, but also pays homage to the former Beasley Road street name that this segment was a part of back before Veterans Parkway was constructed. Review the existing conditions. There is only one existing development with frontage on this particular segment of Blackman Road. It's that daycare. If you look on the, on the aerial photo, it's the daycare here. However, the driveway for that daycare is being rerouted up to the new realigned Blackman Road. And so I've consulted with the fire department, and both the Planning Department and the fire department believe that there's no need to readdress that daycare because it will continue to maintain its access on Blackman Road, so it can keep its Blackman Road address. So with that being said, as is our standard protocol, we'll need to conduct a public hearing on this street renaming, and staff recommends that you rename this segment to Blackman Beasley Court. And if you do choose to rename that segment, we would ask that you allow the timing of that renaming to be determined by staff so that we can coincide the timing with the completion and opening of the realigned Blackman Road. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. If there are no questions, we will go ahead and open the public hearing. See if we can find anybody out there that wanted to speak on this item tonight. I don't think I see anyone else out there. So we will close the public hearing, ask for any questions and/or motions.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Ms. Jacob?
Ms. Eva Water?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye. Motion passed. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Blomley.
All right, so that concludes our public hearings tonight. Next, we are moving on to staff reports and other business, and we do have one, one that we know of here tonight, and it is a mandatory referral to consider the abandonment of a portion of a drainage easement on property located along Heron Crossing. Huddleston Steel Engineering, Inc., on behalf of Kathy Nobles is the applicant. Mr. Barbie, good evening.
Good evening, Chair Jones and members of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. The mandatory referral before you tonight is to request the abandonment of a portion of a drainage easement located in the Rock, Rockbridge Cove Annex Development, located along Heron Crossing. As you can see in your cover page, there's a section highlighted in green that is requested to be abandoned and then relocated so that it better aligns with the facility that's used for drainage to the north. Staff has reviewed this request, as long as our planning staff, as well as our city engineer have reviewed this request and are supportive of this change. If you should decide to approve this request, staff requests that any approval be made subject to staff comments that are listed in your staff report.
Okay. Motion to approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and many seconds. Ms. Jacob?
Ms. Eva Water?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Barbie. Okay, any other staff reports? Mr. Blomley's acting like he might have some.
Yeah, very, very briefly. With the end of the year coming up, we have our continuing education requirements, and so there are a few opportunities. I emailed you about one that our Community Development Department is, is putting on on October 27th, I believe. It's for education about fair housing, and that'll be between 9:00 and 12:00 at the airport Business Center. And so if you'd like to attend that, please let me know, and I'll get you some reservations with our Community Development Department. Also, annually in November, TAPA, which is the State Chapter of the American Planning Association, puts on a planning, virtual Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals training session, and that'll be, that'll be conducted live virtually, but then they will also have indicated that they will record it, and that will be four hours. So if you wanted to do, obviously, we encourage you to get as many hours as, as, as you'd like, but a minimum of four. So you'll get three hours if you attend the fair housing training, or you could get all four hours with the, with the TAPA Planning Commissioner training, or you could get a combination of the two. So give you some more information shortly when I get the registration for the, for the virtual training. So more information to come on that, but just keep those in mind so we can make sure that we, that we hit those training requirements by the end of the calendar year.
Did you have a date specifically in November for that?
Believe it is November the 17th. But like I said, if you're unable to make it live, you can participate live, but if you're unable to participate live, they have indicated that they will have it available recorded.
Perfect. Thank you.
And we do meet next Wednesday?
Yes.
The 18th, I believe it'll be, so we have a week off this month. Any other business? And if not, we stand adjourned. Thank you all very much.